It depends on what Quentin says.
Okay, we're good then.
Good evening. Welcome to the Carlisle Local School District Board of Education meeting on Wednesday, November nineteenth, two thousand twenty-five. This meeting is a meeting of the Board of Education in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business and is not to be considered a public community meeting. There is a time for public participation during the meeting. Roll call.
Mrs. Morris?
Here.
Mrs. McIntosh?
Here.
Mr. Jewell? Mrs. Miller?
Here.
Mrs. Milligan?
Here.
Let's stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Fisher, would you please do the student and program recognition?
I will. We have a number, as you can tell by the audience, a number of students to recognize this evening. We're going to do four or five different groups. The first group that we'll be recognizing will be our fall all SWBL team members. And then after we get done with that, we have some students we're going to recognize for cross-country. And then we're going to recognize our football seniors and our marching band seniors for their accomplishments throughout the course of the year. When we go through this again, we'll do it in four different groups. As we do this, students will call you up here. And as you get your certificate, you'll come around here behind the board members. And like I said, we'll do them in four different groups as we go through this. So looking forward to recognizing quite a few students. So first, we're going to call up Mr. Augustine as we recognize our all SWBL fall athletes.
Grab your mic.
Good evening. So we have thirty-four SWBL-recognized athletes for the fall. We had a great turnout of participation in fall athletics. I believe we were up somewhere around ten athletes for high school and five or six for junior high, so an increase. But we'll get right to it. For SWBL boys soccer first team, we have Jake Fox. Joey Irwin, second team, boys soccer. Landon Johnson, SWBL honorable mention soccer. We have a lot of students that aren't here tonight. They have other obligations, athletics, work. On to SWBL girls soccer, first team, Annie Steckel. Allison Barnes, second team, girls soccer. And honorable mention, girls soccer, Brenna Matthews. Girls volleyball, second team, SWBL Greenlee McReynolds. And honorable mention, SWBL volleyball, Maya Howard. For girls tennis, honorable mention, Haven Goling. Boys golf, first team, Kale Smith. Boys golf, first team, Randy Wood. Boys golf, second team, Elijah Dobbins. Boys golf, second team, Ben Rust. Boys golf, second team, Nate Rust. Boys golf, honorable mention, Blake Carl. Girls golf, second team, Haley Bremer. And Lexi Allinger, honorable mention. SWBL football, first team, Colby Morgerson. SWBL football, first team, Isaiah Brady. First team football, Luke Richards. First team football, Austin Benton. Football, first team, Jackson McIntosh. I'll slow down and we'll catch up. First team football, Ashton Pelfrey. Second team football, Alex Collins. Second team football, Drew Conger. Football, second team, Michael Parks. Football, second team, Jake Fox. Football, second team, Luke Langdon. Football honorable mention, Clayton Jewell. Football honorable mention, Trent Snodgrass. And football sportsmanship, Wiley Plank.
All right. So as soon as this last one comes up, we'll get a picture of you guys and then have you sit down. And some of you will be back up again soon.
We also have district football award recipients, which just came in the last couple of days. First team all district, Colby Morgerson, QB. First team DL, defensive line, Austin Benton. And first team DB, Ashton Pelfrey. For second team, we had running back, Alex Collins. And wide receiver, Drew Conger. Second team utility player, Luke Richards. Second team offensive line, Isaiah Brady. And second team defensive line, Jackson McIntosh. For cross-country, we had some regional qualifiers. Teagan Combs. And we had a good time watching the meet up at Troy. Good competition, a lot of people. Julian Combs, regional qualifier. And Olivia Baker, regional qualifier. We'd also like to recognize the senior football players on our ten-and-three regional semifinal team. Austin Benton. Isaiah Brady. Zach Cobb. Drew Conger. Caleb Holland. Kennedy Jackson. Clayton Jewell. Riley Jones. Jackson McIntosh. Michael Parks. Ashton Pelfrey. Dallas Pies. And Luke Richards. And Wiley Plank. Thank you.
Okay, our final recognition tonight will be for our band seniors. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Oliver.
What's up? Uh, we just wrapped up another tremendous band season for us. A ton of growth as a program. I'm sure you guys heard of the football game. This is our sixth consecutive state qualification. That is a school record. No nobody, no band in Carlisle history has gone six straight. And our back-to-back superior ratings for the first time in twenty-eight years. So we are thrilled with the progress of our band program. This year, we entered a tri-state circuit for the first time in many years. Bands from Ohio, Kentucky, and Indiana, some powerhouse band programs in the area. Our goal was just a, just getting to finals for the first time in over a decade. They got into finals, placed seventh in the tri-state area, and ended up ranked thirteenth in the nation at our nationals last weekend. So thrilled with our season and our growth and our progress, and thrilled with a terrific senior class who found out about this meeting pretty last minute. So we don't, we do not have a lot of seniors here, but the one that we do have was here for Peyton Smith back here. Let's go! Let me get Peyton Hurst first. It's our kids' first week off, so they're all kind of back to work and doing their, their making money thing. I'm going to go ahead and read off our band seniors. They are not here, but just to, just so they can get their name heard and watch it on TV maybe. Grant Woolforest. Lily Allen. Will Anders. Maya Hale. Danica Isaac. Kai McIntosh. Jaden Messer. Riley Mitchell. Chloe Neff. Kaylin Noy. And that is it. Once again, a terrific senior class that we are infinitely proud of, that we have no doubt will be extremely successful when they leave the Carlisle Band Program and CHS. So our lone senior that's here, Peyton, you can smile for Mr. Fisher. Make her be by herself.
Or you may head out as well. It's completely up to you. We will not be offended either way.
Okay, thanks. We have an anonymous donor that wants to do five dinners, like cook for five families on Thanksgiving Day.
Do you want to mention that?
I'll say it.
Under your, at the end?
And show those families.
Okay. Yeah, I will. I will. Okay, Ms. Morris? Uh, so you all should, moving on to number four at this point, you, everybody should have received this evening or this earlier this afternoon copies of the administrative reports, the Director of Special Education report, and our Athletic Director report. Any questions on any of that information? Okay, we are ready to move on to number five, Ms. Morris.
Are there any visitor comments this evening? All right. Mr. Bessler, would you please give the treasurer's report?
Yes, thank you, Mrs. Morris. First thing is non-action item is audit update. Seems like over this past week or two, I've gotten lots of requests for information. We had our auditors on site for a full day. One day last week, three of them here for the entire day seemed like was requesting endless amount of information, or maybe I just felt that way. But we're progressing. Right now, I got an email from my lead auditor today about the status of the audit, and they're pretty much done. Right now, they're finishing up some federal testing for our federal grants. And then once we get our GAAP financial statements completed, then they will come back and finish up the audit, probably December, January sometime. And I would not anticipate them finalizing the audit until at least February. But we're halfway there at this point. So, and action items for the month, just a couple. First is I need approval for the minutes for the last regularly scheduled board meeting, which was October twenty-seventh.
Motion to approve?
So moved.
First by Mr. Jewell, second by Ms. Milligan. Roll call.
Mr. Jewell?
Yes.
Mrs. Milligan?
Yes.
Mrs. Morris?
Yes.
Mrs. McIntosh?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Next is the financial report for the month, which you received as part of your packet. No real surprises. Again, I sound like a broken record, but I also like to sound like a broken record because I don't want there to be any surprises. We're finishing up the, the heavy payments at the beginning of the school year, getting that taken care of, and getting ready to close out the books for calendar year-end, which will be during the month of December, and getting ready for W-two time for our employees. So if there's no questions about the financial report, I need an approval.
Is the track, is that final yet, the payment on the track?
The, the payment on the track is not final yet because they just finished the Shopwood and Discus area last week.
Okay.
Uh, right now, we have scheduled for Friday as our final walkthrough. And I just complained to Mr. Fisher that it's supposed to rain on Friday, and I don't want to be out there in the rain walking around the track and checking it out. But, so right now, we do have a, a final walkthrough scheduled. Once that's taken care of, then we'll get our final bill from them.
Okay. Motion to approve?
So moved.
First by Ms. Milligan?
Second.
Second by Ms. McIntosh. Roll call.
Mrs. Milligan?
Yes.
Mrs. McIntosh?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Jewell?
Yes.
Mrs. Morris?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Fisher, would you please give the superintendent's report?
Made my report just a little bit shorter because he gave you the update on the track. But obviously, first and foremost, a lot of congratulations here, and we just recognized so many different students. But first, a recognition of our football team again for their outstanding year they had this year. Ten-and-three record, district semifinal. I mean, it was going to that football game Friday night, even though it did not turn out the way we had hoped. The atmosphere was electric. I mean, it was such an awesome feeling, walking around and looking at everything going on. So big kudos to Coach Kugel and his staff for everything that they did this year to, to bring our boys to where they were. A lot of seniors, obviously, getting ready to graduate, a lot of holes to fill, but certainly was a tremendous year. Also, thank you again to Mr. Oliver and to Mr. Shukman for what they did with our band program this year. Second straight superior rating, which is the first time we've had that since the eighties. As John mentioned, a finalist in, on a new circuit that they hadn't been to in a while, in seventh place, and then finishing the top fifteen of our country. That's a pretty outstanding accomplishment based on the quality of music and bands that are in Indianapolis. So great job to those two and all the kids for all their hard work. Again, also recognizing our all SWB athletes. We also had our cheerleaders who qualified this past weekend for nationals in Disney again. And then, of course, our cross-country. So so many great things happened this fall, and so many great things continuing to happen. Do want to pass along a few thank yous as well to, to Mr. Huber, to Mr. Turner, to Ms. French and Ms. Jackson. Today, we hosted our career fair here at the school, our second, I believe, our second annual. Yep, career fair, because I think we started that last year, my first year here. Great turnout. I had a chance to get tons of pictures and walk around and listen to a lot of the conversations that were going on. And our kids were engaged with all of the participants that were here. It was funny, there was, Ernst Construction was here, and they were parked out back. They actually brought a simulator with them. I tried to get Justin to allow me to drive it since I have a CDL, but he wouldn't go for it for some reason. But the kids actually were able to get into that vehicle and, and do a simulator. But he did say the one funny thing is if you can't handle, the kids were complaining a little bit about the cold, and so, of course, they were saying, if you can't handle the cold, why are you talking to me right now? So, but it's a great event. I don't know, Mr. Huber, if you had anything else you wanted to add with that, but truly tremendous event.
I would just say, it's a whole thing, a fan, a lot of people looking into it. Fantastic to see a lot of employers coming to our school. It's fantastic, a great experience for our students to be able to have that, to go out there and get a little bit of experience to what is life going to be like after high school.
And it's an event that they start planning in August, and it takes many months to put together. And we want to thank Ohio Means Jobs for their support as well, to, for everything that goes on. Dan did mention the track. The only thing I will add to it is, like I said, we do, everything is in place now. The shop put disc is all set. We do our walkthrough on Friday, so we're looking forward to getting that project completed. All of our equipment was purchased, or at least the purchase orders in. I don't remember you mentioning that comment or not. So we are hosting this year, we're going to do a small meet, but we are actually hosting the league track meet, so that will be used right away this upcoming spring. So looking forward to that. We do have some upcoming events between now and our next board meeting that I want to make sure I share tomorrow night. As you can see with the risers behind us, we have our fifth grade concert. So our new, Kaylee Hughes, our new elementary music teacher, will be debuting her first concert. So she's nervous but excited about it. We obviously have Thanksgiving break starting next week. It's hard to believe we're talking about Thanksgiving already. And then we come back for three weeks, and then it's Christmas break. We also have our high school and middle school choir concert will be on Monday, the eighth at seven. And our high school and middle school band concert will be on the eleventh. So a lot of great events coming up. And then just a plug for our city, because we are trying to do some things with them. I know on December second, there's the Carlisle tree lighting ceremony as well. So that's at six o'clock if you are free. Election update, obviously, we know, based on the results today, it turned out positive for us. Obviously, we won't have anything official until December eighth because we will have to go through the recount process, but we feel pretty positive about where we are. I will say that once everything is finalized, we'll need to have, starting in December, some conversations about next steps. You know, do we want to tackle the earned income tax? What do we want to do with that? So that'll be something Dan and I have been working to gather information for that. We'll be ready to talk a little bit more about that in December and put some options in front of you to try to figure out what some next thoughts might be. But I do want to say, I think it's very important, because of the campaign that was run, to thank some very special people who helped with that. So Molly McIntosh, because obviously, as superintendent and treasurer, we're not able to be nearly as active in these campaigns as we used to be. So we have to depend on outside people to do it. So thanks to Molly McIntosh, Allison Couch, Brian Lahiff, Courtney Steckel, and Jeremy Thies, even though Jeremy wasn't directly on the committee, Jeremy did a lot of things behind the scenes to get information out to people. And I think it's very important to recognize those five individuals. So thank you very much for all that you, you five did to help make sure that this took place and passed. So that is all I have for my report. Any questions on any of that? All right. So underneath action items for general district business, the first is the reading, first reading of the Neola policy updates for two thousand twenty-five. All of the policies that are there, six of those policies are transportation-related, and they're all there due to changes in legislation and wording changes. And, and as I think I mentioned in my update to all of you, we're going to see quite a few policy updates over the course of the next year. And as I think I mentioned in my update to all of you, we're going to see quite a few policy updates over the course of the next year just due to the constant changes that took place legislatively. The other one that's a change is Policy 5223, which is just, again, language updates for our religious release time policy due to legislative changes that took place in the spring. Letter B is to retroactively approve the overnight trip of our high school marching band to Grand Nationals in Indianapolis. We talked about that at the past board meeting. They made some changes in order to make sure that they were here for the playoff game on the 14th. And letter C is to approve because of the increased numbers in bowling that we had. We actually are going to create a girls' varsity bowling coach position as well. So we have a girls' coach and a boys' coach. So the girls' coach would be a new position. So those are my three under general district business. Questions on any of those?
Has that been filled yet, or?
Yes.
It has?
Yeah. No, no, it has not, because we have to post it. So no, it has not. That is true. Sorry. No, we have to post it, so.
Motion to approve?
So moved.
First by Ms. Milligan?
Second.
Second by Ms. McIntosh. Roll call.
Mrs. Milligan?
Yes.
Mrs. McIntosh?
Yes.
Mr. Jewell? Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. Morris?
Yes.
Number two is to approve the resignation of Callie Cisco as a bus driver educational aide. She took a position with a bus company and is unfortunately moving towards another district.
Motion to approve?
So moved.
First by Ms. McIntosh. Second by Mr. Jewell. Roll call.
Mrs. McIntosh?
Yes.
Mr. Jewell? Mrs. Morris?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. Milligan?
Yes.
Letter B is continuation of our classified resignation, but we pulled it due to connections with someone on the board, which would be to approve the resignation of Denise Jewell as educational aide effective November 14th.
Motion to approve?
So moved.
First by Ms. McIntosh?
Second.
Second by Ms. Milligan. Roll call.
Mrs. McIntosh?
Yes.
Mrs. Milligan?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Jewell?
Number three is the classified employment. And I did add on anytime we do employment, just to make sure everybody's aware, the line about pending required certification and background check. I thought it was good to make sure we put that on the agenda as well. So the first one is for classified, to approve Haley Smith as a subeducational aide.
Motion to approve? First by Mr. Jewell?
Second.
Second by Ms. McIntosh. Roll call.
Mr. Jewell? Mrs. McIntosh?
Yes.
Mrs. Morris?
Yes.
Mrs. Milligan?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
I just noticed, and I'm not, oh, I see why. Letter B is approve Denise Jewell as a subeducational classroom aide, since she is no longer employed as a full-time staff member.
Motion to approve?
So moved.
First by Ms. McIntosh?
Second.
Second by Ms. Miller. Roll call.
Mrs. McIntosh?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. Milligan?
Yes.
Mrs. Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Jewell?
Number four is supplemental resignation of Brooklyn Pickett as a junior high cheerleading advisor.
Motion to approve?
So moved.
First by Ms. Milligan?
Second.
Second by Ms. Miller. Roll call.
Mrs. Milligan?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Jewell? Mrs. McIntosh?
Yes.
Mrs. Morris?
Yes.
And lastly, number five, supplemental employment, again, pending required certification and background check. The first I will point out is to approve Melissa Fisher as the spelling bee advisor. We are bringing back the spelling bee for the first time in a number of years. It'll be a K through 8 position, and we already, we have, I know our first, actually, I think if I remember, I think our elementary is doing... Second grade, sorry. They're doing the spelling bee. Is it on, they're doing in class, I think, on Friday. So it's already started. The actual information has to be in by January, but we're excited to be bringing that back. So I thought we'd point that one out specifically. But there are eight other, including non-renewal of fall coaches who are not certified teachers in the district.
Motion to approve? First by Mr. Jewell?
Second.
Second by Ms. Miller. Oh, Ms. Milligan. Roll call.
Mr. Jewell? Mrs. Milligan?
Yes.
Mrs. Morris?
Yes.
Mrs. McIntosh?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
And that completes my report for the month of November.
Molly?
Yeah. So for the legislative report, I think one that I wanted to bring up specifically is House Bill 455. It's went all the way through committee and things like that now. And I think this is important for a district our size, because one of the things that it changes in there is right now, students with disabilities are afforded free and appropriate education until their 22nd birthday. And unfortunately, in Ohio, when a student has, is a multi-year graduate, takes care, takes advantage of a transition program until their 22nd birthday, that goes as a non-graduate on our report card. So like, our students who are doing great things at Project Search over in Lubnan and TLC and things like that, they're doing what they federally are allowed to do. However, that would come back as like a ding on our report card as a non-graduate. So I think that's really important for small schools, for all schools, but especially small schools like us, because one person who is a non-graduate, even though they're not, can really change a graduation rate. And there's some other things in there that I think are good for schools too, but I thought that one was especially important for a school our size. The other thing that I, there's one, Senate Bill 144, they're talking about changing licensure, which I think that could be good because you can get more specifically trained in a certain grade band. But I also think that will limit us as a board finding employees at some point, depending on the subject matter.
I would say I've been in education for 32 years, and this is about the sixth change of licensure I've seen in 32 years of doing this. They just keep bouncing back and forth between what we do, so. It'll change again at some point in life.
Yeah, oh, it definitely will. That's all I have.
Kelly?
The Miami Valley CTC had their regular board meeting on the 11th at 7:00, and it was just a regular board meeting.
Any old business? Any new business?
I just have a couple things to comment on. I know that a few of us were able to go to the Ohio School Board Association Conference. And it's tiring. There's a lot of sessions. We were able to split up and go to different sessions and come back together and talk about this. And even though I've been before quite a few times, but I always learn something new. This time, I really learned some new techniques for committees, I think could be useful here in our district, as well as just some different ways to be a more efficient board. So I'd like to share those with you guys at some point that weren't able to make it. Also, I just wanted to give a shout out to our community. We've had a lot of great things going on. But I think it's the unsung heroes that sometimes don't get very many accolades. And somebody reached out to me and asking for five family names for Thanksgiving dinner. And they're not just getting the stuff and dropping it off at their house. This anonymous donor is actually cooking the entire meal and having the families, five families, come and have Thanksgiving dinner with them. And I think that that's awesome, and it's somebody that's here in our community and is just loving on our people.
Awesome.
That's all I have.
Before we adjourn, just a reminder that our next board meeting again has been moved for December. It's going to be on December 15th, which was already scheduled, but normally it would be the week of Christmas break. So it is moved as a reminder to December 15th, which I think is the third Monday.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Motion to adjourn? First by Mr. Jewell?
Second.
Second by Ms. McIntosh. Roll call.
Mr. Jewell?
Yes.
Mrs. McIntosh?
Yes.
Mrs. Milligan?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. Morris?
Yes.
Time is 6:38.
He didn't want to use mine, huh?
Have it.
Thank you.
Thank you.